I'm making this announcements in compliance with the You guys ready?
Yeah.
I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenwood for the year 2021 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the voting board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, this notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
Mr. Basserno.
Here.
Mr. Finistrella.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Pantina.
Here.
Mr. Mazzio.
Here.
Mr. Ladadi and Mr. Colletta are excused. Mr. Scudari is absent. Mr. Herbalario.
Here.
Mr. Damondo.
Here.
Mr. DeLuca is absent. Mr. McCallum.
Here.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the January 14th minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any communications, Kathy?
None.
Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to resolutions, seeing none. We'll go to old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? Seeing none. I don't know why I look at you when I say that.
I thought he was raising his hand.
No, it's the solar project. Counselor wants you, come on up. Speaking of new business, application number 385 and/or number 386, which one would you like to present? And then we can go from there.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as a member of the Board of Education, I will recuse myself from this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. David. Counselor, could you just tell us your name, please?
Yes, my name is Dan Klein. We're the Carroll Law. We're here on behalf of HSP Solar LLC and the Kenwood Board of Education.
That's K-L-E-I-N?
K-L-I-N.
I. K-L-I-N-E?
Yes.
And you might have noticed that the board is totally surrounding you, so just address the chair and you'll be, you'll be fine. Which one are you doing first? Which application? 385 is the Harding School, is that?
If the board has any preference, we can start with that. If not, we can do.
You've got the show.
All right, let's, let's do the Harding Elementary School first.
Okay, that would be application 385.
Yes.
Okay.
So for application 385, location is Core 26 Boulevard, Harding Elementary School is in the town's PF zone. And the applicant proposes to install and maintain solar canopy arrays on the rooftop of the Harding Elementary School at a percentage of the plans previously submitted to the Board. The applicant was awarded the contract from the Kenwood Board of Education, and which was facilitated by Gable Associates to install the aforementioned solar energy system at the elementary school. And it will be generated by roof mat solar. And as a public project, the application falls under Section 31 of the Municipal Land Use Law. As the Board of Ed requires a courtesy review, so the Board of Education and HSP are here to present an overview of application 385, the courtesy review, and then for any comments or recommendations in conjunction with the application and master plan. According to the Borough's Master Plan, under Chapter 4, Section C, Key Issues Facing Borough, item number five is to promote the use of renewable energy sources, such as solar panels, under Article 5, Section G, Green Development. Part two is to encourage sustainable development practices. Part four, continue the Borough's membership in the state of New Jersey, and to use their resources to program to encourage sustainability development. Part seven is to encourage energy efficiency and renewable energy technology, part in green development. And part nine is to explore the use of renewable energy sources on Borough buildings and properties. Now, the solar energy project is very much in line, if not almost identical, to what was envisioned by the master plan. And pursuant to Borough ordinance, Section 120-17.5, under Building and Site Design Standards, Part A, the well-considered guidelines contained herein shall apply to all development applications subject to approval, continue proposing buildings, instructions, or alterations or modifications to existing structures. Part B, these building design objectives are intended to assist in reviewing agency and reviewing specific found by proposals. Subsection 1, all buildings should be located with proper consideration of orientation and relationship to solar access and energy conservation. Again, both applications, but all we speak to tonight's application are in line and in the underlying policy intent of the Borough's Master Plan. Now pursuant to the Municipal Land Use Law, Section 4055D-4, solar energy facilities and structures are well considered an inherently beneficial use. Inherently beneficial use is a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves a public good, promotes general wealth fair. Under the Municipal Land Use Law, solar panels are not improving the services either. And to top it, HSP, perversion, HSP has extensive experience with solar projects, both in New Jersey and in additional states. They have experience specifically with municipal, county, and Board of Education projects. And solar energy equipment used by permitted uses to produce energy for these uses is customarily incidental to the principal use, especially in this application. The applicant proposes to undertake this project consistent with the municipalities' goal to promote sustainability and to give the environment a concert in Borough's renewable energy initiative. I'd like to take a moment of the Board's time to commend the Borough for being one of the most outstanding tasks in New Jersey for their energy efficiency and for their green initiatives. Would be wonderful if more tasks were to be paid for, you can hear. Now tonight, I'd like to proceed by first calling Mr. Vincent Gonnella, the Board of Education, the School Board of Education Business Minister. I would then like to proceed by calling upon Susan Brody, the Chief Operations Officer at HSP. And also with us, if needed, is Kyle Trust, the Solar Engineering Project Manager from K&amp;B Design Group, and Andrew Conti, Gable Associates, Gable Associates, which is the energy consulting firm for the Kenwood Board of Education. Should the Board have any further questions beyond Mr. Gonnella and Mrs. Brody? So with the Chair's and the Board's permission, I would like to first call Mr. Gonnella to be sworn in.
That's fine.
How about Mr. O'Brien as well?
Kevin O'Brien, I swear, I swear our Board Planner, with regard to this application and the additional application, do you swear any testimony and make sure we get the truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, Kevin O'Brien, the Board Planner. Sir, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this application and the second application, in the event you're called, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Vincent Gonnella, G-O-N-N-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gonnella, if you could give us some background about yourself, your position, your affiliation, as you're now the real justice reiterate.
Sure. My name is Vincent Gonnella. I'm the School Business Minister, Chair and Board Secretary of the Kenwood Board of Education, and have served in that capacity since April 1989.
Thank you, Mr. Gonnella. Could you provide us an overview of the benefits to the Board from this project?
Sure. I'd like to give you some context of why we're here to see as well. Kenwood, as you know, takes pride in its educational facilities. Harding School built in 1923, so we're celebrating its 103rd anniversary. And the main building, as well as the additions in 1950s and the 1970s, serves the community's pre-K through six student populations. The Brerly High School, the Atlanta High School, built in the 60s, serves the district's 7 through 12 populations. These buildings have been maintained in an excellent standard, with the bulk of the renovations over the years coming out of the operating budget. The last referendum was in 2009, which we came before this esteemed body, which focused on replacing roofs, the district-wide replacement of the Brerly windows, site improvements, including the Harding Loop, and the expansion of the Harding parking lot and resurfacing through the Harding lot. The Board of Education has recently done an assessment of our educational facilities from an infrastructure, an educational, and demographic point of view. The Board of Education has concluded that those facilities have been maintained, they are, there is a deficit from an educational point of view. The facility served very nicely for the 20th century. The 21st century now recalls for a reimagining of educational spaces with an emphasis on early childhood education and STEAM appropriate, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. From a demographic point of view, the district has been closely monitoring the real estate market in the Borough. And as such, and as such, is concerned about several of the larger tracts of land in development will have an impact on educational facilities. The district needs to be prepared for potential influx of students. Part of the district's long-range facility plan is what brings us here tonight. Prior to considering another referendum to address the long-term facility needs of the education and educational needs, the Board of Education is pursuing projects that will not have any, or a minimal, tax impact on the community. The Kenwood Board of Education has officially taken the proactive leap to undergo an energy savings improvement program tailored to the Kenwood Public Schools' district energy conservation goals and budgetary needs. Multiple two upgrades being made within the scope of this program are intended to increase energy efficiencies, reduce overall energy consumption, and decrease our carbon footprint. Set upgrades will directly affect both the Harding and Brerly schools, ultimately reflecting on the students, staff, members, and community service by making for an even safer, more conducive learning environment as we navigate through the 21st century. Upgrades tied to ESIP include interior and exterior lighting upgrades to LED systems. These new lighting systems will use less energy and provide a brighter atmosphere in classrooms. Transformer updates to more efficient units will significantly reduce electric consumption. Each building will also be receiving HVAC upgrades, including a new chiller cooling systems, while the Harding School will also benefit from the new high-efficient condensing boilers. Additionally, Harding School will have some additional rooftop HVA systems installed. We recently received approval from the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities to pursue these projects, and in their approval letter, they applauded the school district for making the commitment to pursue energy conservation. The project that we are reviewing tonight is the installation of solar panels, which will be mounted south-facing, out of view on each of the building's roofs. Savings from solar power, the Solar Power Purchasing Agreement, or PPA, will bolster the size of the ESIP. With the savings from the PPA project, the Energy Savings Company can include more energy conservation measures in the ESIP, ultimately increasing the size of the potential project, allowing for larger, more expensive equipment to be included in the CEESIP at no cost to taxpayers. Installation and construction activities will mainly consist of small handheld powerful tools to install the ballasted racking systems and modules on the roof. HSP Solar has been working with our roofing contractors to ensure that any work performed on the roof is done in compliance with our roof mat warranty. Condom will bring wires and the power down inside the building and into the facility, electrical equipment room, providing power to the facility first. Other work will include lifting materials on the roof outside of the occupied areas of that work within the electrical rooms. Access production will be sent back to PSE and G and credited to the associated Kenwood School accounts. This project, being exclusively contained on the roof of the two schools, will have no impact on the surrounding residential properties or any adjoining structures. HSP Solar will also provide educational materials and support the possibly even science fair with prizes for students. That on the solar array performance will be shared for use in STEM curriculum and in science classrooms. That concludes my brief session.
Is that all you really have?
Got a lot of work ahead of us in the next couple of years.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
I was wondering, with the advent of the solar panels and implementing them on the roof, and how does that transform into value savings financially for the electric bill? How much do you think that that will really recover on that side?
Andrew, we go into the specific numbers, but this whole project is paid for itself, and then we don't have money coming back. So it basically reduces our, our electrical bill. You cannot pursue this project if there was a cost to the Board. So this has not only been reviewed by our professionals, it's been reviewed by a third party verification process, and then as well, it's sent down to the Board of Public Utilities, and they review all the data as well. So we cannot even pursue this project if there was not energy savings, which basically are the normal lower than our electrical bills.
Which is fantastic, by the way. I was just wondering if that also reflects in being able to do other work, because your electrical bills would be so high?
Well, exactly. And that's, that's where the ESIP piece comes in. So if you heard, that you heard me talk about replacing the chillers and boilers, that's what it is doing. So we're able to replace the two chillers, which are giant air conditioners essentially, systems of the boilers, HVAC systems at both schools, at no cost to the taxpayer because the overall savings is being paid for through the solar array.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless there are any further questions from the Board, I'd like the Chair's permission to call my second witnesses.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Gonnella? Sorry, look, no, no, I was going to, I was going to ask the Board, since this is not a yes or no vote, we're not approving anything, we're not denying anything, the school can do this, what we're doing, as was indicated earlier, is a courtesy review. After hearing what we have to hear, the Board determines, yes, the project is, is a good one, and it's worthy of spending public funds, and, and that's, and we recommend it. That's basically it. In the event the Board wants to hear the nitty-gritty as to the solar panels, you can certainly proceed with the hearing. If the Board feels, based on what I've said, that they've heard enough, then that's, that's fine, too. Then. The wife of the woman would like to know what size tech screws they can use. Now, I'm just saying. I get you. If you need more, more, it's here, if not. So gentlemen and ladies, do you, I guess, do you understand what Mr. Rego is saying? I mean, what we hear, this has been thought out, this is, this is a courtesy, this is something that the Board of Ed has put together, and, and it's only going to benefit, benefit us and the town and the school and everything that we're about. So do we need to hear, I guess, what you're saying, I'll just come out and say, more testimony? Correct. If the Board wants to hear more, I believe Mr. Klein's indicated that there are other witnesses. If the Board feels, we've heard enough, it's, it's good, let's move on, then we could, we could certainly move on. Is there anyone? Okay. So that was pretty good, because we will open this up to.
I don't know if there's anyone actually.
No, no, we'll open it up, we need to follow the formalities, but we want to know how far we have to take it. That's, that's okay, sir. Okay, because there is happy hour between eight and nine. So, Mr. Klein, if by hearing what we just said, I don't think you need any more testimony, except from our planner, Mr. O'Brien. It's without prejudice, maybe later, if you need to call a witness later, but for right now, it seems like the Board's, we're pretty comfortable. Okay with it, yes. Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, the Board's major concern in cases like this is impact upon nearby properties and our residents. The applicant has indicated there will be no negative impact. I have taken a look at the plans along with our engineering colleagues, and we can see no negative impact generated by the project.
Okay.
And should the Board wish to recommend it as part of the Capitol Plan, Planning and Engineering have no objection, sir.
Okay. Okay. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask you to give us a few minutes. I need to open this portion of the, of the meeting to the public, so we could just do, have that formality done as well. So can someone give, make a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Ladati, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application and this application only? Would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, sure.
You need to come up to the microphone.
Everybody's wanting to come up.
You need to come on up to the microphone?
I got a bad hip, sir.
Okay. So why don't you yell right from there, but state your name, state your name, and spell your last name and address for the record.
Spell, okay. Eugene Pepe, P-E-P-E.
Pepe.
And I just would like to know the square footage of these panels. And I'm assuming he said east, is it facing where the driveways, when you come in from Monroe, that's what I'm coming up with. I apologize.
So he stated that it's facing south, and can someone?
South. I don't know where he.
South, south.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Missed.
Do you want to know the individual panel size or the overall?
What is an end conference? How much square footage do they have? How many panels are there?
Mr. Klein, can someone from your team tell me how many panels there are, and how many, you know, what the size of it is?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that would, that would be our second witness that would be providing information on that.
Please, please, stay with me, Dr., I'm sorry.
Yeah, you.
Our second witness would be providing information on that. Do you have a microphone?
I'm sorry. We, I'm sorry, we can't hear you too well. Mr. Klein's going to call a witness who can answer to your question.
Okay.
Okay.
With the Board's permission, do I need to swear in this witness?
Yes, she's going to have testimony, yes. And it's just limited to the questions that Mr. Pepe asked. Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Susan Brody, B-R-O-D-I-E.
B-R-O-D-I-E. Susan, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
You just give her, just tell us who she is and what she does, and then she can respond to the questions.
Susan Brody, if you could tell us your name, by whom you're employed, and.
Mr. Klein, can I, can you give me a favor, please? Can Mrs. Brody step up to the microphone, because we're recording this, and it's hard to hear, it's tough enough with the mask, all right?
Yes, careful.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Susan Brody. I'm the Chief Operations Officer at HSP Solar. We're the developer, the potential developer on this project. Just to answer the question asked, at the Harding Elementary School, the design is 750, approximately 750 modules. Each module is about 18 square feet, and doing that math in my head with, you know, let's say it's about 1300 square, 13.
Thousand.
Thousand square feet, and all of it will be on the rooftop. So you won't see it from, my concern is that possibly, the concern is, you know, how much space will it take up visually, and nobody will see it.
Okay. Would you mind if I interrupt? Mr. Pepe, did you hear that, or would you like me to reiterate?
No, that's what I heard, I had to pay attention.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pepe, thank you, Ms.
And it's going to face, it's going to face tomorrow, we have to correct you, it's going to, where's it going to face? South.
South.
South is.
Where the sun is.
Boulevard.
South is towards the Boulevard.
Towards the Boulevard, okay, right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Hold on, sir. Man, do you have no more questions? Are you, are you done, Mr. Brody?
I don't know, let's just pick on the other.
I think, if we need you, we'll call you back again, Ms. Brody. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Sir, sir, no, the gentleman in the back?
Yeah.
Why don't you come on up?
I can speak loud, I can get up.
Well, we need you to come on up, because you don't have a bad hip, and we need you to state your name and spell your last name and address for the record, please.
Denametage, A-H-M-E-T-H-A. I have multiple properties in town. My concern is, how's this being paid for, considering it's property taxes? Like, who's going to be paying for this?
I think Mr. Gonnella, I think he, I think he responded to that. Yes, he did. Mr. Gonnella, would you mind coming back up, and you could respond to that one more time?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Would you like to do that, Susan? I'm sorry, Ms. Brody.
Yes, Susan Brody.
You know what happens up here.
Yeah.
So the gentleman would like to know, is it coming out of taxpayer dollars, and who's, who's really paying for this?
Right. So HSP Solar is paying to build the system, and the only obligation that Board of Education will have is to buy the electricity from us for 15 years at a far reduced cost to their current electric bill. So there will not only be no cost to taxpayers or to the Board of Ed, but there will be a savings that the Board of Ed is going to use to facilitate improvements to the building.
Okay. So to answer your, you could, come on, I got Mr. Hermatash, to answer your question, there is no impact to the taxpayer?
Okay.
And, which is a wonderful thing, and it's all on, on the Board of Ed at this point.
My prayer, thank you.
It's wonderful. Thank you again. Anyone else from the public wishing, Mr. Herbert, come on up, state your name and your hip for the rest.
I don't know where I live right now.
I do, but the others don't.
Good evening, Robert Herbert, 14 North 12th Street, Kenwood.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of the project. My only concern is, my petty is safety. And I want to know, is there, has there been a study on the exterior of the building and the interior for access to the roof? Because once these solar panels are active, even the fire department, if they have to go up there, you know, it's very dangerous, these, these panels. And my biggest concern is, especially on the outside of the building, I've seen it myself over the years, kids use the drain pipes, they climb up, go get the ball off the roof, and that, those kind of things. So all I'm asking is the Board of Ed to do a study on the exterior of the building. I know interior are probably going to have secure doors, but we have to look at the safety because if the kids do get access to the roof, and if one of them steps on that panel, that's dangerous.
Okay. Mr. Klein, who would you like to have come up to speak to that? Mr. Gonnella? Mr. Gonnella, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We did have some problems years ago with children yelling upstairs, up there, getting their balls, because we had these, basically these overhangs above the doors. Once we removed those, it's very hard for them to scale to two stories, and we've never had that problem since then. As far as safety on the roof, there's still access through the interior of the building, through all the current areas, and we don't anticipate any problems getting access to the roof.
Okay. So the other part of that question was, did you do any study on the, I think he was talking about the integrity of the roof that would support the panels, is that what you were saying, Mr. Herbert?
No, no.
Just if someone's to get up there?
Right, study on the outside.
So the answer to that is, the oings were taken off, and they took every precaution possible.
But we did, we did do a structural analysis of the roof to determine that the weight of the solar panels were not having an impact on that as well.
I think they covered it.
That's included the application, Mr. Herbert, and we have reviewed that and tried to test factor.
Okay. I think they covered it. You welcome. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can we get a motion here to close this portion?
So.
Moved by Mr. Mazzio, seconded by Mr. Herbalaro. Is that Mr. Herbalaro? I can't see who you are.
Mr. Mondo.
I'm sorry. There's a glare coming right across you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to Mr. Klein. Could you, so, okay, this one is for the application 385. Why don't we, are we doing a motion now on 385? No. What we're going to talk about is, now that we heard the public and everything else, we need to talk to the Board members, is there any other questions for Mr. Klein or our professionals or anything, or are you satisfied what you heard at this point? Okay, so everyone is satisfied what they heard. Mr., Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to ask you, how can we word this, so it's not so long and lengthy, on the motion that needs to be presented to approve or disapprove this application? Not approve. It's not an approve. Recommend or not? To recommend, that this is...
The board wishes to recommend this project as part of the capital project of the borough and its government entities.
Okay.
And it is, and the board finds it consistent with the master plan.
Okay, so you just heard what Mr. O'Brien said. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend application 385 solar project, consistent with the borough's master plan and whatever he said. Because I was paying attention.
Moved by Mr. Pantina?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mondo? Roll call, please.
Mr. Prasarna?
Yes.
Mr. Finestrada?
Yes.
Mr. Cmenti?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mattio?
Yes.
Mr. Hivalario?
Yes.
Mr. Damondo?
Yes.
And Mr. McCombe?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We're going to move right into application 386, which is also yours, Mr. Klein. And I guess I'm going to anticipate that you have the same witnesses, same testimony. It's pretty much a mirror image of what you're doing, am I correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anything else that Mr. Ginnella or Ms. Brody would enlighten us with that we didn't hear before, or is it pretty much boilerplate?
It's essentially boilerplate, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Nothing different than the first application. Obviously different school, but the testimony is going to be the same.
Yes, correct, same, you know, cost to taxpayers, same overall projects.
And for the sake of Mr. Pepe, is that facing south as well?
It is, it uses the same sun, it's still...
That is important, it's got to face south, we've got to get all the energy we need. So I think we're in good shape here. Does any of the board members at this point, if you don't mind me taking a little control, does any of the board members or our professionals need to hear from any of the witnesses that Mr. Klein brought here today? Okay.
Chairman, the planning and engineering have reviewed the application. We find it to be, we find that the plans are consistent with borough practice, structural integrity has been ensured, engineering has signed off on it, and the planning is pleased with the application, sir.
Thank you very much. At this moment, I need to open this, I need a motion to open this to the public. Someone? Motion made by Mr. Finestrada and seconded by Mr. Mahone. Or vice versa, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none?
No.
Oh, you're back, Mr. Pepe, I'm sorry. Wake up.
This is my wall, because I was told that the...
All right. Now, Mr. Pepe, it's to this application and this application...
Oh, no, this application and this application only?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, 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 I thought you said you were...
Why don't you sit closer in this way?
No, I don't know, I might be arrested here.
All right, okay.
I'm happy, you telling this open to the public because...
All right, I'm sorry, I was caught, my tongue got caught, my eye tooth, I couldn't see what I was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, all right, is anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I need a motion to close this portion. Motion made by Mr. Ladati, seconded by Mr. Habalero. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Klein? Happy hour at 8:00. Okay, so...
You go back to workshop.
Any questions from the board members about this application number 386, David Bailey School at 401 Monroe? Seeing none? Okay, we need a motion almost identical to what just happened on application 385.
Chairman, the board may wish to consider a motion to recommend the application as part of the capital review budget, consistent with all borough entities, and we find that the application is consistent with the master plan.
To make it easier on our board members, that was so eloquently said, so if someone would like to make a motion on the proper nomenclature that Mr. O'Brien just expressed, can we do so?
I make a motion to move on application 386 solar project on David Bailey with everything that Mr. O'Brien just said.
Moved by Mr. Pantina, seconded by Mr. Finestrada, roll call, please.
Mr. Prasarna?
Yes.
Mr. Finestrada?
Yes.
Mr. Cmenti?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Hivalario?
Yes.
Mr. Damondo?
Yes.
And Mr. McCombe?
Yes.
Great, thank you very, thank you very, very much, and let me just express something, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job over there, and this is really a great addition to our borough, and please keep up the good work, and thank you so much for introducing this tonight, we really appreciate it.
We'll have resolutions at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you a lot.
So much for 15 minutes. Okay, moving on, any comments for the good of the board? Seeing none, motion, someone make a motion?
Motion to open the meeting to the public?
I love when he's back, sir. Made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Who?
Mr. Pepe, please. I can't hear. He wants to always talk.
Yeah, but we have to make the motion, yeah, somebody has to second.
We're in the process of opening it to the public.
We need to someone to second.
Mr. Rambino, sir.
Mr. Mazzio, Mr. Hivalario, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe, I can feel that hip, I hope...
Not as much as I do.
My wife just had her hip done, I can tell you, yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
I feel for you, man.
The only thing that's more fun is coming up to your...
Thank you, buddy. I try, I try to keep it light, you know? Tell me what you need to tell me, or us.
Well, I see, I see across the street from me, you're starting work, and I looked at the, I looked at the paperwork and it's a minor, I come up with a minor...
Mr. Pepe, with all respect, can you tell me your address again?
66 Locust Drive.
Oh, okay, I know the block.
So across the street is, was a one, was a one, was one lot and with one house on it, just, I'll make it brief, and now they want to put two houses on it. I don't know how you permitted these people, Mr. Poplar, to come in there and put a minor, a minor, what's the word, not provision?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, thank you, subdivision, what it shouldn't be. Reason, is there an impervious study done? And where is this water going?
We...
There's a lot of water.
If I might, this is, this is about a specific application and we really can't talk about it. When open to the, openly to the public usually means what's been on the agenda that gets within our area.
I can't talk, why did I come up here?
That's, that's a good question, I mean, we can't talk about that application because it's not in front of us, the applicant's not in the room, we really can't talk about that.
The application was approved to resolution of...
But how was it approved, that's my question?
By a seven zero vote.
No, no, I didn't mean that, I mean, like, how could you possibly do it?
Because it meant the requirements of...
No, I'm saying it doesn't, I'm saying it doesn't. And I'll tell you the reason why, can I give you the reason why?
Mr. Ray.
Can I tell you the reason?
It's up to the board, I think this is totally not within our purview tonight, it's a different application.
By the time I get here, by the time you're coming around, the houses will be built, you know...
Where were you when the application was being heard?
I was here.
Yeah, oh.
Oh, I was here, I got, because I didn't notice this time. And I think I was told I would get noticed, but I didn't, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Pepe, if I may, the application was before us a while ago. The application was presented by professionals, they stated their case, we have our professionals here and our board members. We, the way that the case, the way that the applicant presented the case, it was approved, and I don't have any more information than that.
How about, why give me some?
I don't really, I can't really take that from you now, but I can tell you that if you feel that that wasn't approved properly...
Well, I certainly do.
Then that's, that's something that you may have to take up in another arena, but not here.
You're talking about a lawsuit, is that what you're talking about? Well, where do you do it?
I, I don't want you to do that, I...
I don't want to either, but this is so outrageous.
Can Mr. O'Brien maybe clear the air a bit?
Sure.
Mr. Pepe, if you feel that the project is being built not consistent with the resolution of approval, you may report that to the building department, call in tomorrow morning at 8:30, give them your specific allegation, we'll look into it. If it's not being built according to the...
Why can't I tell you this now? I can't, I can't tell you this right now?
This is not...
We don't enforce.
I want you to enforce, I want you to know. I want you to have knowledge.
So Mr. O'Brien said that if it's not being built according to the resolution, do you think it's not being built according to the resolution?
On what reason?
And that's an enforcement matter.
That's an enforcement matter, we can't, we can't do any...
I'm not asking you to act, I'm asking you to understand and know and listen to, that's what I want, that. Do we have, we have snow plowed, do we have snow removal? Because there is no place to put the snow with these two houses. I was up this morning at 7:00 noon, and I wasn't able to get a copy to print, so I looked briefly, and there is no place to put the snow. That's one thing. The other thing is, it doesn't comply with the two, with the two, on the corner lot, that's a corner lot, I hope yous all know, that's a corner lot. And the, here it is here, the building shall have side yards of not less than five feet, except that a corner lot shall have a minimum side yard of 15 feet. Now, those 15 feet apart, which it is, two houses can't be built in.
The issue is addressed, Mr. Pepe, in order.
And what?
It was not bound to be a corner lot because these are two landlocked lots.
Excuse me?
These are two landlocked lots.
Oh, I know that, I'm not talking about the two lots.
Therefore, it's not a corner lot.
No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm talking about Laurel and Rips.
Right, so we were on Locust Drive, sir.
On Locust Drive, but the next street is Laurel Avenue. That's a corner lot. Does anybody investigate that? Anybody know what the hell I'm talking about?
Mr. Pepe, this matter was heard and it was approved, what, two years ago?
Don't run me out of here, I'm talking...
I'm not running you out of here, I'm just telling you...
You're an informant, you're an informant. Here, let me show you, let me show you, Pepe. This is Laurel Avenue and Locust Drive, it's a corner lot.
Do you address the chair?
Mr. Pepe?
Here, can I show you this?
Uh, yes, you can.
This is not...
Can you help him out, Lou, can you help him out?
Why don't you, I'll pass it over.
Thank you very much, you want to say? Well, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Now, you'll see clearly, it's Laurel Avenue. And Locust is a corner lot.
Nick, what are you saying, this was done in 2019?
Well, I wish somebody would take that into consideration, we should have looked at it.
Well, we did look at it, Mr....
And?
And we made a decision on that night for whatever reason, but...
I don't have a reason.
Well, I don't have it in my back pocket because I...
Well, I mean, it's a big decision, you should remember it.
Well, you know how many cases we hear, Mr. Pepe?
Yeah, but that's a, you're kind of a tiny decision.
Mr. Pepe, you have, you have one... Well, you have one in a row, we hear a bunch, and to keep everyone's...
Does anybody remember?
Well, this was what, 2019?
Well, that is done.
Can I, can I speak?
Sure.
Sure.
Hi. All right, you live at 66...
It's Locust Drive, by the way, it's not Locust Street.
Do you, what do you call it, Locust Street? Okay, do you live on 66 Locust Drive?
Yeah.
Okay, and this property is possibly at 61 Locust Drive?
I don't know what that, I can't remember.
Yeah, okay, oh, okay.
It's directly across the street.
Okay, okay, on, on July 11, 2019, at the regular meeting at a planning board, Coward Planning Board, we approved that application, motion was made by somebody, I have it here, but whatever it was, and it was a unanimous vote. I have the minutes here of the meeting, which you could probably get an over, I guess, and get it, but it was approved. I was on the board at that time, so were a couple other people in the audience here, and it was reviewed by the board, it was probably reviewed, more than likely it was reviewed by our professionals. I'm sure the public that was here, I remember seeing you, you sat right there by where Mr. Herbert sat, I sat next to you.
Not in July.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't privy to that, maybe, I wanted to be, you know, personally.
All right, no, it's all right, it's all right, I'm just telling you that it was reviewed.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think he knew about it, to be honest with you. Well, it was a...
Listen, sir, listen, sir, listen, sir, you got to speak, I'm just telling you, is that it was, it was reviewed?
Yeah, yeah.
It was approved, it was open to the public, and like Mr. O'Brien said, it met code...
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't...
Okay, well, maybe, maybe it's not meeting code now, maybe they're not building it, right, which is, it's the building department, it's not us.
I'm saying you're a pluralist, excuse me?
Mr. Pepe, this is what you need to do.
And he wants to get rid of this, so...
No, 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 no.
I want to, I want to...
Mr. Pepe?
Here's the snow.
I don't...
Here's the house, here's the snow, here's the plot, where are you going to put the snow? You know, nobody cares, because it's not in your yard.
Mr. Pepe?
This guy here, he just wanted, you want me to go, I'll leave.
No, Mr. Pepe, we don't want you to go. We understand your concern, but here's what's going, here's what's actually happening. Back when this was approved, it was a unanimous...
I know, I know.
Okay, I heard you talk, please, because I'm trying to be as patient and as accommodating as possible. It was approved by seven board members, the planner, the engineer, all weighed in. The way it was presented, we found that not to be against the law or whatever you're saying it is. If you feel that it was done improper, you have the right to obtain an attorney to go and look at this. But right now, we don't feel as a board that we did anything wrong, or we would not have approved it. There's a lot of matters to that case that was on that night, well, for that night pertaining to that application, and we heard it. We're not just going to pass something that we think, and we have no favoritism to anyone, but we're not just going to pass something that doesn't work properly within the guidelines of the municipal land use law. That's the best I could give you.
This here is, Coward Code, section 197 dash 38, section D, was there a waiver on that? Did you have, did you have any kind of waiver on that?
See what you're doing, Mr.?
197 was replaced in 2015, Mr. Pepe. And it doesn't exist any longer.
This doesn't exist?
No.
Well, this is not included by law. I mean, this is, this is, it's in the, it's in the book.
Not since 2015, sir.
Okay, so what is the, on law, if you tell me what a corner lot is today?
A corner lot is at an intersection of two streets.
That's correct. What is the, what is the sentence, I mean, on the corner lot?
This is the guide, I can tell you that, it's...
Well, you're, because that's sometimes, believe it or not, a rule, a real rule. This is the corner lot.
I haven't...
I showed you right here.
I haven't answered your question, sir.
I know you want it, but I want you to go on being wrong. I want to help you. Here.
Corner lot, sir.
Here's the corner. It's Laurel and here's Locust.
Mr. Ray, this has nothing to do with it.
It does. Mr. Pepe, please see an attorney and seek advice. That's the best.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of foot traffic here with children that walk through here because if you know, there's a walkway with the entrance to the park, and a lot of bicycling, a lot... Nobody was just hitting it into consideration? Nobody wants to look at bike vehicles with the snow? How is the snow going to be done?
You, Mr. Pepe, with all due respect, the application has been heard and it has been approved. To look, to look at your pictures now or anything that you're showing, like, as evidence would be detriment to what we've already done. So, what you need to do is not come to the board and tell us, we need to change this or look at what you're doing. What you need to do is hire an attorney. And then, and then go from there.
Let me just ask you one question.
You can.
How do you plan, I'm people talking to... How do you plan on removing this snow here?
I don't. I don't plan, I don't plan on it. I, I'm not in that department. That's a deep...
Take into consideration?
When we discussed that case, maybe we did. When we discussed that application...
Tell me how it's going to be done?
Snow on private property is not...
I'm not talking about private property. If you would, if you would stop and look at this, and I would show you what you need to look at.
Is the snow...
If you know all right, and you have to get them, you want to look at it?
Okay, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta stop this. Mr. Pepe, Mr. Pepe?
They want to move that house from here.
I gotta say something. I'm sorry. I want to say something. You want to say something? Mr. Pepe, you're, you're, you crossed the line.
I didn't cross the line. You crossed the line. You tried to get rid of it from day one. You, and you're not here because you know your rules, all right?
Mr. Pepe?
You know why? Because it's Mr. Paparatta. That's why. If it was another person, you would have did something else. And you know, you know. You can't remove the snow. You can't walk there anymore. You have, who is the impervious? The impervious, uh, study done?
So, I guess what you just said to me as the chairman of the board, the vice chair and this planning board, that we took favoritism to Mr. Paparatta? Is that what you just said?
Yeah. I just said, you heard it.
All right. Thank you, thank you for your time, Mr. Pepe. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yeah, 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 thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
How about that one? Can I talk about something else?
Right now, I think you just insulted me and this board, and I think your time...
But why does he get everything he wants?
He doesn't get everything he wants.
I think he sucks. What happened to Mike Vitale's house? What's going on with Mike Vitale's house?
Mr. Pepe, you're way over the line.
Now, can you ask about Mike Vitale's house?
No, no. You're rude.
Why?
You're rude.
No, you are. You are rude. Because you tried to get rid of me from day one.
I'm trying to keep you focused.
No, you're not trying to keep you focused. You're trying to, you're trying to stand me away from what I'm talking about. You don't want to look at the facts.
Mr. Pepe?
You don't want to look at them.
Mr. Pepe?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, I asked you about Mike Vitale's house.
I don't want to speak about Mike Vitale's house because right now, you've just insulted this board.
I didn't insult you.
You insulted it.
Child, little baby, you can't insult this. I don't want to insult it.
And you're continuing. We've heard enough. You don't care?
No, no. Okay, what's your argument?
We, you could do one of two things. You could leave here on your own accord.
You're not going to have me arrested?
No, I'm not going to have you arrested. I'm going to ask you to just...
I'm leaving. So, you want me to refuse to tell you not Mike Vitale's house?
I'm not refusing. You, yes. It's a pending application. We can't speak on it at this...
Oh, my, thank you. Why didn't you say it when we did?
I'm saying it now. Yeah. Okay. Can we have a motion? Does anyone else from the public wish to speak? No. Okay. Seeing none?
Mostly closed the public portion.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. David and seconded by Mr. Finestrella. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that at first, everyone. Motion, can someone make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I didn't make a motion. Were you making a motion or do you want to speak?
No, I thought it was something for... I got a letter that there was some other thing supposed to come, occur tonight.
Sorry, sir?
It was, I got a letter and it also said it was some kind of...
You're talking about the...
It had nothing to do with solar stuff.
You're talking about an FTV application for, on the authority that Mr. Pepe just asked about?
Yeah.
That's been postponed until May.
That's been postponed until May. They did not notice properly. So, do you want to give the public the benefit of when, when it's going to be heard?
May 13.
May 13. That's up for, the next application is going to be May 13 at... Is it May 13?
You sure?
No. First Thursday. Second Thursday. It's, um... That wasn't on our agenda. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's up for May 13, so you're welcome to come back. I'm sorry that you sat here through that, but...
You'll get new notice.
You'll get new notice.
All right. The other charge is, I've seen a lot of things going on in Cranford. I didn't want to get overbilled. I don't know what they were trying to do.
So, the folks who were supposed to be here tonight, unfortunately, did something. They sent out the wrong paper. So, they have to resend the right paper, and they'll be here on May 13, to the best of our knowledge. If you want to call Borough Hall that afternoon to make sure they're still scheduled, you might save yourself a trip and get back here.
Sorry about your inconvenience.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Finestrella. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.